We're going to call this regular workshop meeting the Jacksonville City Council order. Council, you have before you a copy of the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting with one add-on consent item, consent agenda item on resolution clearing proper surplus and authorize it settled to another government entity. Tom Lawson, entertain a motion at this time to adopt the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda with the consent items? With the change in consent items, the addition?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next, we have adoption of amendments in the consent items, and this time I entertain a motion to adopt.
Move before the minutes and the consent item?
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Brings us to our first item, then we're going to have a presentation of the annual audit. And I'll turn it over to you for introduction, Dr. Woodruff.
First of all, on behalf of the staff, we'd like to congratulate you, Mayor, on your reelection, Dr. Washington for her reelection, and Mr. Lazara for his reelection. Thank you very much for the leadership you give this community. We're very proud to be your staff and look forward to another great year ahead. Tonight, when we are talking about positive things, there's no question that the work of the Finance Department continues to be the most important work of city government. As we have said in past presentations, the keeping of public revenue and making sure that it is expended in the appropriate fashion as you, the elected officials, have approved, is our goal and is our responsibility. As you know, this year, we have a new auditing firm. It is the firm of Cherry Beckett. Tonight, we have a young lady named April Adams, who is going to be presenting her overview of the budget and the audit rather. And I'd like to begin by asking Gail for additional comments, please.
I don't have any additional comments, just April has some slides that she's going to go over. Appreciate the opportunity to be here.
You said that with a straight face.
You know how much I love being here.
I know. We love happy hour.
Yeah, so, good afternoon. I'm happy to be here to present the audit results from the June 30th, 2019 financial statement and compliance audit. So, we're going to go through this presentation. So, what I want to share with you tonight is just briefly cover what the role of the external auditor is, as well as the results. And through that, I'm also going to talk about what we look at when it comes to internal controls, as well as identify what the significant audit areas are, and how we approach that from a testing perspective. And then I'll go over some financial results, basically just comparing current year to prior year. And then I'll do a quick summary of what you should take away from the presentation in case you get lost along the way, and then I'll be glad to take any questions or comments. Alright, so the role of the external auditor. We do perform your audit in accordance with auditing standards that are generally accepted in the United States of America. So, any audit that gets performed on any kind of entity or company would be the same audit standards. But then, because you're a government entity, we also perform them under the government auditing standards. Both of those standards require that we plan and perform your audit to obtain reasonable assurance that your financial statements are free from material misstatement. And so, what that means is that we do a risk-based audit. And so, most of our audit is focused on figuring out where could those financial statements be most susceptible to material misstatement. That also means that we don't test every single transaction that occurs throughout the year. Once we've performed our procedures, we are required to express opinions, and because we perform your audit under those two standards, auditing standards, we have to express separate opinions. And then, because we do a compliance audit over the grants that you expend that are federal and state, we express opinions related to that. So, the city gets four opinions as a result of the audit. I'm happy to tell you that all four of those opinions are unmodified opinions. That's also known as clean, and that's the highest level of assurance that you can get your financial statements from, free from material misstatement. And when it comes to the grants, that they're in compliance and they're being administered properly. So, congratulations on that. The audit standards also require us to communicate certain things to you that may have occurred or been found as a result of the audit. And we do that in two ways. One is this presentation this afternoon, as well as a letter that accompanied the financial statements. And I'm just going to highlight for you what that letter covers, so that I can spare you the reading if you want, or I can encourage you to read it somewhere. It covers things like policy changes that may have been significant, that you might want to be aware of, that occurred throughout the year. I'm happy to report that there were no significant policy changes. You probably had things like that in the past when you've implemented, let's say, the OPEB standards last year, or something like that, but there was nothing like that this year. That letter also identifies to you what the significant estimates are that are in your financial statements, simply because those are based on management's judgment and best facts and circumstances at the end of the year. Things like your allowance for doubtful accounts, your depreciable lives on your fixed assets, your OPEB and pension liabilities, and those are the biggest ones to name for you. And then finally, we make you aware of any audit adjustments that occurred throughout the results of the audit. There was no audit adjustments. So, that means that the books and records that were given to us are the books and records that ended up in your financial statements. That also means that Gail and her team are capturing all the transactions that happened throughout the year properly and getting those reported correctly. There was one past adjustment, and this is just because it came to light in the audit, and it's not insignificant, but it's not material enough for us to have said, "You've got to book it." And it's related to an old assessment that's just been on the books, it's $66,000 related to your proprietary funds. And we've agreed that those are probably not collectible, and that they need to be written off, and that we'll do that in fiscal year '20. But it wasn't necessary to open back up the books and change everything for that $66,000. Alright, so those are some pretty good results. Alright, so when it comes to internal controls, the audit standards do require us to identify all the significant transaction cycles. And what we do is we obtain an understanding of all what those processes and policies are, and we do a walkthrough of one transaction to ensure that that actually is how the transaction flows. And then, from there, we decide whether we actually want to test and rely upon internal controls. We do, we did walk through the purchasing transaction cycle, the cash receipts transaction cycle, payroll, and as well as treasury, how you pick and select your investments. We tested controls over payroll and cash dispositions to ensure that those were operating effectively, and then that helps us reduce some of our procedures in those audit areas when we get to the substantive areas. Audit standards also require us to look at journal entries as a part of the audit. We get what we call a data dump, so it's all journal entries that happen throughout the year. We take that data and dump it into a system and mine it and look for transactions, and then we'll pull those and look for the supporting documentation to ensure that they are just transactions or journal entries, as well as properly approved and reviewed and recorded in proper accounts. The audit standards also require us to look at your controls over information technology. We look at the general computer controls, so we're looking at how is your data backed up? How is it secured? How is it protected? What are the passwords? What are the requirements for your passwords to be updated, et cetera? And so, we've completed that through a questionnaire, as well as a follow-up conversation with your IT for clarification, and no issues were noted as a result of that. And then finally, when it comes to single audit, we're required to look at your controls over the administration of those grants to ensure that you're meeting all the compliance requirements related to each of those grants, and no issues were noted there. Alright, so as I mentioned, we perform a risk-based audit, which means we're looking for those areas where the financial statements are most susceptible. Typically, that's going to be your larger balances that are included on your financial statements, and so I've identified those across the top. And the way that we test those areas is we're doing them substantively. So, we're either confirming activity or balances with third parties, we're looking at them analytically, predicting based on changes in what we know. And then, the third way to do it is to test the details. We actually test a sample of the actual invoices and transactions running through those accounts. So, this is where we spend the most of our time. Just not to say that there are areas where we may still be looking at things, it just wouldn't be the majority of our testing. Alright, so the financial results. So, the next couple of slides are just showing you current year to prior year. So, on the left will be 2019, right will be 2018. This particular slide is showing you the makeup of your general fund revenues. And so, you'll see that your revenues increased 1.5 million from the prior year, or 3 percent. And the majority of that increase is in your taxes and your property, or yeah, property taxes. So, not a lot of change in the categories year over year. And then this slide is showing you the makeup of your general fund expenses. You'll see that they decreased $238,000 from the prior year. Not a big story to tell here, they stayed pretty categorically the same year over year. And then this slide is just letting you reconfirming what, yeah, I'm sure Gail's already told you, but this is showing you your revenues, expenditures, and your appropriated fund balance results based on what actually happened versus what you budgeted. So, the top line is showing you budget across, and then the second line in the middle is showing you the actual, and then the variance. So, you brought in $2.3 million more of revenues than you budgeted. You also spent $3.5 million less than what you budgeted, which means when you made your budget, you said that you planned on using fund balance, 1.8 million of it, and instead, what you actually did was add 3.6 back into fund balance. And that's one, obviously, because you got more revenues than you expected, but you also held less spending than you planned to be. Alright, so this slide is showing you your general fund balance, the actual makeup of the fund balance between how it's restricted or committed or assigned. You guys focus on your unassigned fund balance. You can see that it increased 7.4 million from the prior year. You've got a goal to keep your unassigned balance at a minimum of 10 percent of next year's budget. You've actually got 50 percent of next year's budget in your unassigned. Budget expenditures.
Are you open for questions as you go on?
Sure.
What is the, can you summarize the increase in revenue as to where it came from?
Yeah, so, on this slide back here, the majority of the increases in the taxes, you can see your taxes went up almost a million. The other piece is in your miscellaneous, the other significant piece.
But the taxes are property and sales taxes?
It's just, in this slide, the sales are in the inter, in the, yeah, it's in the blue area. I think the sales taxes in the white blue area.
I think our ad valorem is 37 million. So.
It's, yeah, sorry.
Valorem is 23 million.
23 million.
So, maybe, yes, maybe it's got your property, your sales taxes.
Your sales tax revenue, right.
Also, I'd like to remind you, one of the reasons why the sales tax went up is because of the impact of her confluence.
The sales.
And the retail sales.
Well, and the other item that affected the sales tax was we started collecting some sales tax on mail.
On what?
In the state mail.
Yes, right.
The Wayfair decision where we were able to collect sales tax.
Okay.
That was the big jump, I think.
I mean, retail sales took a tremendous jump, so that was a big.
The category that includes privileged licenses, sales taxes, and grocery sheets on vehicle taxes increased 785, 785,000 over what was budgeted.
Yep, no question.
And property taxes actually decreased 249.
Any other questions on that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah? Alright, that was the fund balance. Okay, so this one is, switched it up a little bit on you. I was trying to show all the proprietary categories at one time, your revenues versus your expenses. So, the dark green is your revenues, and the light green is your expenditures. And then I've got all three proprietary funds for 2019, and then the same thing for 2018. And then at the bottom, I've put your change in net position in total. Your water sewer makes up the majority of that in each case. So, for 2019, your water sewer put back in net position 3.93 in the current year, and then your solid waste had a negative use of fund balance, and then stormwater put back 170,000 in that prior year.
And for the public, I know the council knows this, but for the public, the solid waste fees do not cover the entire cost. While the commercial fees do cover the cost, the residential fees do not. They're supplemented by the general fund taxpayer.
Alright, so this is showing you for the entire government, both governmental and nonprofit, governmental and business type, your total cash. So, you'll see that your total cash increased 5.7 million for the prior year, or 7 percent. The largest portion you can see is invested in that NC Capital Management funds, and we've got plenty of cash.
Could we go back a couple of slides to the fund balance, please?
This one?
Yes, ma'am. One of the things that we would remind the public is that it's important to have a fund balance so that you can pay your bills when you have a national, when you have a natural disaster. The final impact of the city has not yet been totaled. We have a general amount that we will get back from FEMA and other insurance and so forth. But generally, the city incurred between six and seven million dollars worth of expense. That expense had to be funded upfront, and that's why you have a fund balance. That's why the state, especially the state, has the requirement of 8 percent minimum, and your goal has been so high. If you'll recall, we had contractors enter the city within a week. Those contractors, as you know through Gail, she doesn't let us spend money on a contract unless we have the money in the bank to pay the full contract. So, as a citizen, you may be sitting out there saying, "Wow, the city is flush with cash." That's true, but remember, you can only spend it once. When you spend your savings account, you cannot spend your savings account on recurring expenses. Recurring expenses should be funded only by recurring revenues. So, the reason why the mayor and council have consistently said over the last 10 or 12 years that we're going to build this fund balance is specifically to ensure that when we have major unexpected issues, we have the money to pay in advance or pay as we go. Gail, any comments on that?
Well, I was just going to say that we spent 7.5 million dollars in the last year on hurricane recovery, and we've recovered all but 1.7 of that so far. But we still have a couple of pretty large projects, Jack Emmett being one, that we have not spent much money at all to address that issue. So, there's still more to come, and you do have to have the money on hand to upfront, or you can't recover.
Could you go to the next slide, please, for the one that showed, yeah. Also, for the public and the council, while this is an audit of the past year, as we prepare, and we already are getting into the budget process for FY '21, you will recall, we sent information to you in the last week regarding county landfill and the possibility that landfill fees are going to have to go up. So, when you look at the category for the middle category of solid waste, that's a category, as we discussed, the budget strategies for the coming year with you in future meetings, that's one we're going to have to pay a lot of attention to. Thank you, please proceed.
Alright, so, give me the cash, a healthy cash balance, some of it. Alright, this slide is showing you the makeup of your capital assets. You'll see that your, it shows that your capital assets went down $6 million from the prior year, but you've really added some additions. You had some additions, 1.5 million for water and sewer improvements. You also had 1.5 million dollars of additions for street and sidewalk improvements, and then you also added buildings of 3.7 million. The reason why you're seeing it decrease is because your depreciation was almost 18 million, or 16 million from, during the year. So, that's just, you're depreciating more than you're adding it for this particular year. And then your long-term debt, this includes all your installment proceeds and your loans and your revenue bonds, as well as your pension and OPEB liabilities. You'll see that your long-term debt decreased $5 million. You had one addition, or a couple of additions for installment proceeds that added up to be 3.2 million. Your OPEB and pension also increased slightly, but you did pay down 11 million towards of installment purchases, as well as loans. So, that makes up the difference there. So, in summary, you received clean opinions, there was the one past adjustment that I mentioned, there are good internal controls in place, there were no significant deficiencies, material weaknesses identified as a result of the audit. And this is my chance to tell you this was the first-year audit. That's never easy to switch audit firms and us get used to what they call things and we call things, and asking for information that she probably hasn't had to provide in a while, you know, loan documents and those types of things. So, we appreciate being able to struggle together to get to that kind of meeting, to get the audit done. Everything was given to us on time and as we asked for it, and it's just a chance for us to say thank you, and we appreciate the chance to be able to perform the audit for you guys and present it this afternoon, so, thank you.
Before we ask the council their questions, there's a question I always ask the auditor. We want the public to understand that the auditor does not work for the staff. The auditor is hired and worked specifically for the mayor and council. So, I'm going to ask you this question. At any time, did any member of the staff, including me, or the finance director, the city attorney, the deputy manager, did any member of the city staff ever ask you to change or do anything that you felt was inappropriate or you felt uncomfortable doing?
Absolutely not. Thank you.
Questions? How many municipalities since you're, it's the first time we're with you, do you cover?
Me personally?
No, the firm.
Oh, the firm? We probably, we probably do 250 governments.
How many?
250, maybe? A lot. We do a lot of governments.
All in North Carolina?
No, no, no. No, we are from Maryland all the way down to Miami, and then Tennessee and Texas. So, we're a southeast regional firm.
Could I take a guess how many in North Carolina you do?
Maybe 45, 16.
What'd you get for the largest?
The largest? Mecklenburg County.
Oh, you do the county from Mecklenburg. Very good presentation.
Counsel, one thing we would ask you to do is to accept the audit. That doesn't mean you're adopting it, it doesn't mean that you're approving it, it just means you're accepting it, showing that the contract is closed. We'd also like to recognize that you've not had an opportunity to read all the pages. We know that you normally give that assignment to Mr. Thomas, but if the rest of you have questions over the next several weeks, as you do read this, the auditor has, we will provide her name, telephone number, email address, and so forth. You do not have to go through the city clerk, you do not have to go through the city finance director or the city manager's office. You're certainly welcome, as always, to go directly to the auditor to ask information. Likewise, if you would like to ask questions, you're welcome to address those directly to Gail, and she'll be happy to get those for you. So, at this time, we would ask, do you have any other questions?
Other questions?
You guys can call me anytime.
Were you going to be slides on our next meeting thing, or minutes or something?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, I'll move with you, except for.
Second.
If a motion's second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you so much for your presentation.
Mayor and council, at the last workshop, we gave you an overview, and I thought Ryan did an excellent job of giving you the historical perspective of the ETJ. At that time, we had what I would call 30,000-foot level maps. I know in the past week, we have provided you with the individual close-up maps, but I asked Ryan if he would come back tonight and to review with you those detailed maps. At the end of the presentation, we are going to ask if you're comfortable then to authorize us to proceed with the necessary legal actions for the formal reduction of the ETJ. I would guesstimate that the final matter will be in front of you in January or February. Mr. Carter, does that seem reasonable? Okay. Ryan, please.
Thank you, Dr. Woodruff. Good evening, Mayor and council. Well, certainly, as Dr. Woodruff stated, you know, as we move forward, if that's the direction that city council sends us on, we'll be working closely, as I mentioned previously, with the county staff, so that they can assign county-wide zoning, or county zoning to the parcels that will be going back to their regulatory responsibilities. So, we'll certainly, on our end, I think that we can meet those, the January, February timeline, but we also want to be cognizant of the counties period. And one thing that we may do is we may have it adopted by city council, and then a delayed effective date to give them time. But we'll talk with the county and come up with the plan that works best for both parties. Just kind of a reminder for, primarily for those that may be watching on G10, the ETJ, as we call it, the extraterritorial jurisdiction, is the city's ability to impose zoning and planning regulations beyond the actual city limits. So, it's an area right outside the city limit, so there's no city taxes. They do receive basically no police and fire services, no water and sewer services, but they do fall underneath the city's zoning and building inspection subdivision rules and regulations. The reason for this is we want to ensure compatibility, land uses, and design requirements with the neighboring areas to our corporate limits. So, the area here before you on the map, the blue area is our city limits, the green is the ETJ. And previously, the red areas are the areas that we identified as the areas we'd be looking to remove from the ETJ. And as Dr. Woodruff stated, we sent you a map after the council workshop, and we just wanted to kind of go over those areas to kind of give you a little bit more of a better view than the 30,000-foot level view. And we'll start with the Anzo Pines area. And as you'll see here, this is Old Maplehurst, so the food line is located right here. So, we would propose to kind of cut the jurisdiction off right there past the food line. The Harley-Davidson dealership is located right here. And this is the Southwest Creek Bridge. So, that area, unless council feels the need to either make it less or increase the area, that's the area that we would prepare maps for, and we'll share this data with the county. So, that area would be removed from the city's ETJ.
Also, remember, the reason why we were recommending keeping the area Ryan showed you in green is because over the next several years, hopefully when the DOT gets their funding worked out, you're going to have major redevelopment and renewal in that area, and we'd like to have input into how that is accomplished.
Right, one other thing, and Dr. Woodruff, I'm glad you stated that, because if you look, there's some, the crosshatching, for lack of better, the dots, if you see that on the maps, based on the information we pulled from the tax card, that identifies the parcel as vacant. So, as Dr. Woodruff was talking about with the road projects, and you also have a large vacant tract here, and we have a lift station in the southwest area, so that's why we felt that was a good line to kind of draw and leave the right part in and leave the left part out, or take the left part out, so. And the game plan tonight is just to kind of go through the five or six areas, and if you have any questions about where, if we want to remove more or take less out, just, I'll let you know and ask you with each one.
Where is our water sewer stop at? There? Like, triangle? Triangle? Triangle?
But we do have, we do have a sewer lift station right here near the southwest soccer fields. So that's very close.
Can you sort of point that out?
All right, let's see. Let's go back to this map. The pump station is located right in this area.
I can answer that. Water stops right at the bypass on 17 South where 24 goes over 17. We have water that goes into the op road area. And then wastewater, we have a lift station in the Springdale area. We actually have an agreement with Onwassa where we have a lift station. The Springdale subdivision comes to our lift station and then any, there are some large tracks surrounding that, those would come to the city. So we do have a lift station there. We also, there's a small private lift station behind, it's the old George Howard property. It's a little strip center. I know a lot of mirage is there. We have a, there's a private lift station there that also comes to us. And whether that lift station could ever be expanded, I'm not sure. We don't maintain that one, but we do serve that area with sewer.
But not water?
But not water. That is correct.
Where'd you say the water stops at? I'm sorry.
The water is right at the bypass. Yes, sir.
So the Springdale lift station, we really don't have water there?
We do not have water. We have, as part of our master agreement with Onwassa, they are willing to provide water to the city for anything that would annex in that area. Of course, those each would be worked out individually through individual agreements, but we do have that master agreement in place.
We have had some development proposals right there near that lift station.
Yes.
We've had some in the past and they kind of went quiet and we've actually had some more recent discussions by them kind of bringing those back forward.
And we do have a, before we got that master agreement in place, we did have a master plan that showed how we could serve that area with water.
So there's pride. Everybody good with this area?
Sure. All right, moving on to the next area. This is the Gum Branch area and Summersville School Road and Gum Branch is located right here. So we're proposing to keep the parcels along the frontage. The first, Living Water Church is here and this is the Duke Energy compound here. So we would just basically keep the green areas along the corridor. This was, I think, the area that we had the most discussion on previously.
And I was kind of on the other side of that discussion because I didn't really favor keeping this because you look at it and it's, you don't have any of the hashtags. We're not, you're looking at a totally developed corridor, right? I mean, there's opportunity for growth is.
I'm not sure if we turn the hashtags off on this because I know this is vacant. So unfortunately, we took the hash, the dots off of it. So some of this is vacant tract. Some of these are vacant tracts, but there are a lot that have already been developed. Likewise, I'm sorry. Oh, likewise, you've got this area, let's go back one. These houses right here, this is the subdivision example that I mentioned previously where the front half of the subdivision's in our ETJ, but the back half is in the county.
Is that Lordell?
Lordell. The Circle K is right there.
Yes, pretty much. Yeah. And this is one of those areas where between the staff members have difference of opinions here. I will say to you that as the manager, I really don't support keeping any of the area outside past Duke Power. A lot of it, maybe not all of it, but a significant amount of it is in fact developed and it's not going to be redeveloped because of highway construction. So the only thing that's going to cause redevelopment is what I call individual investment. But that's a discussion. You know, you don't have to make that decision tonight. At a future point, there will be a public hearing and the public action, but that is something I would encourage you to travel that area and determine how much of that do you want to keep.
So what along that line there is our water service?
We have a 16-inch main that runs all the way down Gum Branch Road to Rock Creek. We actually supply Rock Creek and several subdivisions along that route.
I think we're right here.
And we serve that along with some in Tanglewood, which is kind of odd because we're surrounded by Scientific who's a private. And I don't recall how that happened and maybe that they didn't have capacity at the time or something like that, but we do have some customers in there.
And the only reason we have that line is because water's actually coming from Rock Creek.
Rock Creek. That is correct.
We didn't put that line there to serve them. We.
We have about 10 wells out in the Rock Creek area. And when we acquired those wells, it was actually part of the agreement to serve Rock Creek. So that's how we have Rock Creek.
Onwassa also have.
Onwassa has a line in that area and so does Scientific.
Scientific is the main.
So Scientific actually serves most of the area you see out in here and also in here.
That was the last annexation.
Proposal.
Proposal we had and I believe what from my memory is that the cost analysis of that was such that.
Prohibitive.
It was very prohibitive as far as.
That's correct.
It would cost the city $24 million to do that.
Glenn, can you, can you show slide 54, please? I believe that's the right one. This is the alternate proposal that we discussed previously. So basically, it takes it to Duke Energy right here and then I think this is Living Water. I hope I'm not saying that incorrectly, but that's the, that's the dividing line, alternate.
Mayor, if we could, I know that we did not mention this to all council members, but we do have the opportunity. Congressman Murphy has dropped by City Hall. If you don't mind, could we recess for about 10 minutes and you can rejoin?
Anything to recess? Come back. Sure. Okay, we're going to go back in session and we'll take our next topic here for tonight's discussion is the Jacksonville Station. We're still doing the ETJ update.
Would you like to just pick up on Gum Branch? Ryan, did you have other comments on Gum Branch?
No, sir. This is the alternate so that city council can provide us with direction on whether to go with the partial removal or all of it from the Duke Energy power. The next area is on Ramsey Road. Actually misspoke at the workshop. Previously, we had half the cul-de-sac on the other side. So we already removed that with our previous removal. This would basically just pull back to a dividing line here, Carolina Forest here to the south. We've got a development plan that's already been submitted for a single-family here. We know that there's some prospective development there and they've been working with public services for the services to be provided in those two areas.
That Loop Road up in Chief Drive or something like that?
One's chief and one's totem. All right, moving on if there's no other concerns. The next area is going to be out here at the Piney Green, Halltown Road area. We had some questions on this previously. Basically, the Patriot Park area here, we're going to keep the shopping center at this location. We'd remove the two parcels that are kind of remnants at the corner of Halltown and Piney Green Road, the vacant or the large tracks to the north. Waduk High School located right here. So the shopping center is within the city limits? All right, any questions or concerns? If not, we'll move on to the next and should be the final two areas. So this is Highway 24 and Piney Green Road and we're talking about removing the road that still remains in our jurisdiction here immediately next to 24, right as you approach the Piney Green Road intersection. And then we would keep the existing shopping center, food line, former Kmart at this location. We've got some large tracks. This Carver Road is proposed to tie back in with some, some development proposals that the Toons were proposing. So we're proposing to leave that area in, but then eliminate all of the area in red of Piney Green Road. And I believe there's a lot of, I believe Onwassa is already kind of within this main area. So we didn't foresee any service requests similar to the apartment complex that's located in this area here there on Onwassa. So they had no, no need or no desire, I won't say need, but no desire to annex. So we don't believe that an annexation request will be forthcoming along this area, so we propose to remove that from the jurisdiction as well.
What section of the sewer line is ours?
We have, we actually have a pump station that serves the shopping center, but the pump station you're referring to, we'll need to go back a slide, is actually up in, let's see, right in this area?
Oh, yeah.
So it's a, it's a good way back. All of that, all of this lower section is on Onwassa's area. It's part of, that's part of our agreement for the Papa Branch pump station.
Well, we partnered with Onwassa, sharing that cost of the sewer line, right?
That is correct, sir.
What did we do, reserve a million gallons or something? Does that recall?
I'm sorry.
Reserve a million gallons?
Yes, we did. And they, can we go back? And that was for essentially this area up in here. It actually goes up to Regalwood.
What was that development? Was it supposed to take Patriots?
Patriot Park. And that's the, that's the blue area right there in the middle of the circle. It's already annexed.
So it is?
Yes, sir.
So these two areas are where we analyzed the, what we thought were future infrastructure and existing infrastructure components. And we felt that basically we had a dividing line here with the exception of the area closest to the intersection. And that's why anything south of that line, we said, remove. And then everything to the north of that line, for the most part, there's some exceptions, but that's why we left those areas in.
Has there ever been any more movement on Patriots or the park?
Recently, I did talk to the engineering firm that designed that and they, they told me that there is interest from several companies to possibly buy that and proceed with development. As we know, the housing market in Jacksonville is turning back around to be more of a demand market. And with that, I think you will see Patriot Park developed in the near future. The other thing I'd like to point out, there's nothing in the state law that says that you have to go from unincorporated to ETJ to city. If you remember on Patriot Park, if I remember correctly, it was not in the ETJ and it annexed directly into the city. So the fact that you're removing a lot of this property does not mean that you are somehow setting yourself at a disadvantage for future annexation. It still is the fact that if they need our utilities, then we require annexation. And as we've seen tonight, from that particular point on Piney Green back up toward 17, we do believe that's still a growth corridor for the city. And with that, that.
Let's go back up to the last slide again. That, that area that fronts on Piney Green Road, what is that? What exactly is there now?
That one right there?
That's Waduk High School. That is, that is the school.
Okay.
Two lines here?
Yes.
And Bojangles. You have the church here and here?
We will proceed then to take the necessary steps to determine a final boundary. I think in the area around Gum Branch, it would be appropriate for us to send that to you and ask you for an informal vote unless you want to take an informal vote tonight. But at some point, we do need to finalize the boundaries so that Ryan can do the necessary We'll get some information out to you shortly on that and you can give us feedback.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel.
I do want to commend Ryan again. When you look at the educational information on the historical ETJ, I found that extremely beneficial. I think you did too. Well done. I'd like to bring you up to date on Jacksonville Station. As you know, we've been working on this. Indiana's going to give you an overview and Ron's going to assist, so please.
Mayor and counsel, of course, we've been talking about Jacksonville Station since 2012 CIP discussions. And of course, we've done a lot of work up to this point. Obviously, you've been involved in, in this design for the building and, and we've worked on a lot of the funding sources. As you know, we, we're going to use federal funds primarily for this and we're going to use the land value as the match, local match requirement for the federal funds along with some state funding in that. So now we're at a point where we want to seek council's approval to go and advertise the project. So that Indiana will take you through the details here, a quick update on where we are.
Okay. So we're going to go through the first couple of slides pretty fast. I just wanted to kind of refresh council's memory as to where we are. So here is one of the early renderings of the new Jacksonville Station and this is the view from Marine Boulevard. This is the aerial from Jacksonville Station. And I would say that we have been working on the design of this project over the last year or so through several of the estimates. We did do some value engineering and that resulted in eliminating some of the higher-cost items. One of those items that we actually decided to eliminate is the canopy that's shown that goes over the bus area. So that was over a million dollars that would have been added to the project. And so with this project, we'll be putting in the footers. So that's something that we could actually add later on if we so desire. So just want to let you know that we did do some value engineering on this project. And so again, this is the, the front view of what you look at from Marine Boulevard. And this is the 15,000 square foot building. It's, houses our operational side and our administration side and it is combined with a central breezeway. And this is the rear of the building. If you get off the bus and you're walking into the building, this is what your view would look like. Again, the operations side is going to be where you have all of our contractors, the driver's lounge, the driver's training area, the ticketing area, the lobby. On the administration side, that's going to be home of our Jacksonville Transportation Services. So you've got the MPO and Jacksonville Transit. We've got large meeting spaces, et cetera. Here is another rendering of what it would look like from Marine Boulevard and even Marine Boulevard and Thompson Street. And so we've got the main entrance off of Thompson Street and we are proposing with this project of realigning Thompson Street. We also have a second entrance towards, closer towards Belfork.
The site itself, the area, the site is twice the size of the site of the Public Safety Build.
Yeah, the parcel itself for the Center for Public Safety. So this parcel is actually 13 acres. So if you look at the parcel for Center for Public Safety, this parcel is twice. The building itself, as I mentioned, is 15,000 square feet, so it's actually larger than Sturgeon City. So we've got the area with the bus, bus platform where people will be dropping off and catching, coming into the lobby area, and then we have, of course, public parking.
And of course, it's nestled at the rails to trails and it satisfies part of the requirement when we receive the land from the base to basically have a trailhead. So the bathroom facilities and that will support the, you know, users of the trail.
So for some frame of reference, that when we talk about, the next slide, we're going to talk about the base building. And so that, that would include the building itself and all of the site work, et cetera, for it to be operational. So the estimate that we have right now, the latest estimate is 11.5 million. So the base building is just that. It's a fully operational building, the parking lot, all of the site improvements, et cetera, is at nine and a half million dollars. We have identified three. We have identified three alternates that we think were beneficial for this, not only this project, but for the area. So we've looked at realigning Thompson and North Marine Boulevard. We also identified the opportunity, especially given Hurricane Florence, is, you know, we don't build many buildings. And so this is an opportunity that we wanted to possibly look at strengthening half of the building to serve as some type of shelter for our employees who are required to work so that we can respond more immediately after a natural disaster. And so we identified strengthening half of the building, and that was estimated at about $700,000. This building will have the capability to serve as that shelter. We have shower facilities. We've got a generator that's gas, natural gas. And so this would be a great opportunity for us to invest, especially with the federal government picking up a majority of that cost. And then another alternate we previously just looked at was rubber shingles. We brought that option to Council several months ago. The rubber shingles has a life cycle of about 50 years as composed to, compared to asphalt shingles, which is about 20 to 25. But that does come with a cost. Again, this is a very large building, so that cost, additional cost is about $400,000. With all new construction in the city, we are required to pay system development fees. And that is, that's something we are required to pay and it's based off the size of your water meter. We also looked at furniture and technology. Previously, we felt that maybe this was not an opportunity for us to seek grant funding on those two components because it is federally compliant, so Buy America, et cetera. That we have done some additional research. That is something we can meet. And so we've added that back into the total cost of the projects for the federal government to pick up that larger share. And then obviously, we also have Construction Administration and testing. So we've got some materials testing, geotechnical, and then have the architects assistants, excuse me, to help oversee the project. So that kind of comprises the estimate that we have at 11.5.
How much is built for the contingency? You know, usually, as we know, it's either a building of this size, what did you do, 5% or 10%?
I think there is 5% built into the budget. So the funding strategy of how we're going to pay for the building, we've identified the same sources that we've been discussing, you know, throughout the entire project. And so we've had many conversations with our partners at the state. They get federal money for building such as these. Unfortunately, we don't get them as direct recipients because of our size, but they have, were able recently to notify us that we have an additional $2 million at our disposal that they have committed. So we stand confidently before you that the federal amount that we feel that we can get for the project is just over 10 million. NCDOT has made a commitment of just over 1. We have talked with OUTS that they were going to commit 100,000. And so that leaves an area that we have to fill with potential general fund money of just over, or almost $100,000. So that's how we get to a balanced budget of 11 and a half million dollars. We'd like to remind Council that of this entire project, that we're able to build this building with such a low investment with general fund money is because we're using the value of that land at 1.3, as Ron mentioned earlier. And so I know there's some eyes. Does anyone have any questions about the funding?
Now, what does OUTS stand for?
OUTS is the Anzo United Transit System. So with the new building, currently their, how their offices are downtown, with this new building, they're actually going to be moving to this area. So with that, they've made the initial commitment for the construction of 100,000. And then we're also, will be seeking revenue from them as they are going to be sharing in the facility costs.
The SC dot money, that's firm?
Yes. So it's not to be, not to be confused with the construction of the project money. This is money that they have available in their fund balance. And this is with Public Transportation Division, not on the construction side.
Now, this, the building, will this be kind of self-maintained, but this won't require cost of overs, somebody being there all the time, right?
There is an operating cost, and she'll show you if you would.
But it's not going to be manned 24 hours a day.
And that's actually what we're going to talk about next. So right now, we did, we did do a cost allocation plan for the project. And basically, what we did was we looked at the total square footage of the building and we looked at who would be housing the facility and we came up with a percent. And that's percent is how we determine the operating cost. Now, I would caveat that by saying that these numbers are extremely, are higher than what we would expect the first year out. I think we have identified that the operating side of operations would be on a 12-hour day, and we don't see that necessarily happening in the first year. So, but for budget purposes, we wanted to see what the large scale of impact would be. So what we are anticipating is, is that we'd have a $213,000 would be your operating cost for the year. And as you can see, that the majority of that cost will be funded by the federal government. OUTS would have, that would be their share, their rental cost for the facility. The Jumbo, the PO 104 nut money would also be paying their share. And then as we talked about previously, that there is the opportunity for us to sell Amtrak and Greyhound tickets. We do have a storage facility for Greyhound, all of which that we're able to collect revenue for joint office space and ticket sales.
See, some of the manning will actually occur with staff from OUTS or the Jacksonville Transit staff that currently operates out of OUTS's offices down the street. So we're just bringing everybody together and so there'll be a combination of staff in the building.
And then to answer your question about the impact for general fund, I guess we skipped some slides. So the, when we talked about the 99,000 that we were talking about for trying to make the budget whole, that is with the assumption that we are going to select all the alternates. At this time, what we're asking for is just concurrence to move forward with the bid of the project. And so our intent is that we would bid the project in January, then the bids would come back and we would have a workshop opportunity where we can sit again with Council to review all the bids received, to evaluate all the alternates. It gives us staff opportunities that if we need more money to see, we can go back out to our funding partners to see if additional money is available. And so we're not asking for any concurrence in any of the alternates that we discussed. It's more of, are you comfortable with us going out for bids to see what the market looks like? It's also important, the timing of this project. Because as you know, we've been hearing that the base is getting ready to kind of ramp up their efforts in getting contracts on for their renovations for Hurricane Florence damage. And so the timing is really perfect for us that they're getting receipt of their bids for their projects about the same time that we're actually going out for bids. So this is the time when the contractors are looking for opportunities as to why should I move to the area while they're waiting for those larger contracts on base to actually start for construction. So again, we anticipate starting hopefully construction in March. It's about a year worth of construction, but we are excited to get started if Council is willing to support in us at least taking that next step to go up to bid.
See, we see this as a great opportunity on Marine Boulevard. You know, Council's invested in a lot on Marine Boulevard. You know, we've got the Jacksonville Landing, we've got the Public Safety Building, seen some of the private redevelopment along there. Right across the street from the site, the old Captain D's is under reconstruction right now. So this would be a real, you know, additional benefit for what we're trying to do to approve the, improve the area along Marine Boulevard.
Sounds good. So we'll go out as one bid?
I mean, the street part?
Yeah. When we went through the engineering and we did the value engineering, we had an, we were trying to stay around 9 million. And then as we did the value engineering, we already designed the canopy. When the estimate came in at close to a million dollars for the canopy, we said, let's, let's take that out of the base bid and add as an alternate. And that allows us the flexibility to determine if it's worth it, you know? And so if the canopy itself is not an option to construct, we're at least putting the foundations in. And that is, so you're already doing all the site work and we're making it nice and easy that we can come in after the fact and just erect the canopy itself.
But we would do all the elements of the project under one contract?
Yes.
Nice job. Well done.
Yeah, it's a great job.
Last thing we have is your One City moment. So Glenn, if you'll bring up some slides on that, please. As you know, about two weeks ago, we had the grand opening of the YMCA in the building that the city has provided to the Y. The YMCA is going to have a tremendous opportunity to help us in downtown redevelopment. You've been by the building. You can see how beautiful it is, the things that the city provided. Primarily, we fixed the roof. We did a lot of work through the Street Department and Public Works. Overall, though, the building, I think, looks absolutely great. If you drive, have the chance to drive by at night, it really looks good. The lights are on inside and it just gives a vibrant touch to the downtown area. You'll notice there, you've got the chief talking to one of our citizens and his granddaughter. But the turnout was very large. Mr. Sewell was there giving a welcome and an overview. I do hope that you have the opportunity, though, to drop in at any time that the Y is open. I think Phil Lane would be proud of the fact that his former town store has been turned into something that has great benefit to the young people of the community. Also, on October 23rd, we had the annual Patriot Observance. We know that this is something that this community is deeply involved in. Here you can see a picture of General Al Gray as he speaks. Every time he speaks, the troops give him an absolute standing ovation. And he's a jewel. He's a great value to all of us, especially to the Marine Corps and to the country. Obviously, we had great music provided by the Second Marine Division Band. We had great speakers that day. And then we had the White Oak High School Chamber Choir, who absolutely were phenomenal. When you look at the people who visit this on a daily basis and touch the names that are on the wall and remember how this community was impacted, it truly is one of those opportunities to reflect, to say that we will never forget. Mayor, your comments were extremely well done. Thank you all very much. I would like to make one other request of you. We did receive information earlier this week of the possibility of getting a grant relative to the Oyster Highway that does not require any city match. Currently, we have six locations that have been installed. The grant could give us enough money to add 24 more. Potential for the grant is $2.3 million. And what we're doing to match that grant is to use the donations that have already been received by others. So we would ask if you have any objections to authorizing Wally and his staff to file that grant. With that, thank you very much. Look forward to our next meeting. Thank you.
Question to adjourn?
So moved.